All right, thank you, Dwayne. All right, Carl, you about ready? I appreciate everyone being here this morning. Appreciate everyone being here this morning for our December one meeting. And as always, if you would, take a second and put your phone on silent would be appreciated. And we'll open up in a word of prayer with Dwayne opening us up and Will leading us in the pledge. So if you would, everyone, please stand.
Y'all pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, as we bow before your presence this morning, God, we just thank you for waking us up this morning. God, for giving us another day. God, I ask you be with us in this meeting this morning, God, that every decision made be pleasing to you and according to your will. God, as we come into finishing up this Thanksgiving season and moving into the Christmas season, God, helping each and every one of us in our hearts to remember what it's all about. Just forgive us where we fail you, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, praise.
Praise the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Lot?
Yes, Mr. President, should have before you the November the seventeenth board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes to board, please approve said minutes.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Make a motion supervisor Banks to have a second. I'll second it, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sir and citizens?
All right, first on the list is John Brown.
Mr. Brown? Please come up and to the podium and yes, sir, and state your name and address and a couple of minutes and tell the board what you'd like for us to hear.
Good morning, everyone. My name is John B. Brown. I reside at two thirty-five Brown Road West, Canton, Mississippi. I have a complaint here this morning I'd like to share with you guys. On Thursday, November the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, property owner Benford Richard, two forty-nine Brown Road West, Canton, Mississippi, had a public event with an entry fee consisting of ATV riding and loud amplified music with a DJ from seven PM to twelve midnight. On Saturday, November the twenty-ninth, property owner Freddie Carson and Arthur Kane, three seventeen Brown Road West, Canton, Mississippi, had a public event with an entry fee consisting of live entertainers, loud amplified music, and four-wheelers from eight PM to twelve. On both events, Thursday, November the twenty-seventh and Saturday, November the twenty-ninth, I called the Madison County Sheriff Department requesting for law enforcement to be sent out to my home at two thirty-five Brown Road West three times to complain about the loud amplified music and loud four-wheelers. I was told by the officers there was no enforceable laws in this agriculture area pertaining to public events with an entry fee or having loud amplified music. The second time I called for law enforcement to come out upon the arrival, I provided the officers with a printed copy of the loud noise ordinance adopted by Madison County that went into effect September twenty twenty-five. It states no amplified music allowed after ten PM. I also provided them with a cop- a printed copy from Madison County Planning and Zoning Department stating the requirements needed in order to obtain a permit to have a paid event on rural property in Madison County. The printed document plainly states that a paid event on rural properties has to be approved by the Madison County Planning and Zoning Department prior to the event taking place. After going through the application process for a permit, the Madison County Planning and Zoning Department will determine if your proposed event is allowed by a conditional use permit, a variance, or a formal rezoning. After the deputy sheriff found out the landowners or promoters of these events did not have the required permit or variance, they should have immediately shut down these events, allowing the promoters of these events to continue breaking the law until twelve midnight, stating that the residents of Brown- stating that the people attended these events had paid to enter is not acceptable. And that it did allow it to go on. Both of these events caused the residents of Brown Road West to be denied the quiet peaceful privilege of property ownership. This privilege is protected by laws in place that will not- that were- that were not enforced on either event. I'm asking our district fire supervisor, Paul Griffin, and our sheriff, Randy Tucker, to make sure this did not happen again. Thank you all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Griffin?
I see a call on- I see a call on both days and you're right. It should have been shut down. It looks like on the twenty-ninth. We did, and just for the board's information, it looks like we shut it down, but we estimated there was over five hundred people there and a one hundred cars. And the deputy wrote in his report, he estimated he turned away at least that many after- after we shut it down and got- actually got highway patrol to help us on sixteen east as well. That was on the twenty-ninth. It does look like you're right on the twenty-seventh, it does not look like they shut it down, but I need to confirm that with the deputies that responded. But you are right, I'll take that up with my deputies and they- if they did not have the proper permit, we should have shut it down.
Yeah, I appreciate you all taking care of that, yeah.
Where does the permits come from? Who- who gives them the permits?
Scott.
Scott does? Scott?
That comes through a conditional use. It goes through a public hearing. None of this was done on this event.
So they did not have any permits at all?
No, sir.
Okay.
Do we know if alcohol was being sold at these events?
I don't know.
Cause that- that
I doubt it. I learned about this a couple of days afterwards. We did have this occur a couple few times out in the country. And we thought we had put things in place to keep this from happening, but it still can sneak through. Me knowing it can slip through way the sheriff and knowing. But the first thing we should do is get a phone call from some people that lived out there. Matter of fact, one of the deputy called me after all of it was over. And I told him if they were paying, they were violating. If they were paying to get in, they were violating. And the deputy didn't realize that at that time. He had the authority to check- shut it down, but didn't know that he had the authority to check- shut it down. It's strange. I know about everybody over there, especially you, Mr. Brown. I didn't get a phone call.
I don't have your number phone.
We could've got that saw that night. If they was going in there and paying to go in there, they were violating the zoning ordinance.
But I showed the officer, I went online, printed it out. I showed the officers that showed up before the shift, six o'clock shift ended. And then he told me to contact again after the six o'clock shift ended, and I made contact again. Officers came out, first time I verbally told them, the second time I showed them on paperwork, I highlighted. I showed them in- in highlight, this is what Madison County requires in order for you to have this kind of event. This is a paid event. It requires a permit. You all don't have a permit. The officer went to check to see if they had a permit. They didn't have a permit. One officer finally came at the end. One other said, we're gonna just let them go on since they paid. We'll let them go on and continue since they paid. And I said, look, you're dealing with these people in a cordial way. You can't handle it like that. And then one officer did go down there about eleven-thirty and shut them down. But Sarah- that was on Thanksgiving night. Saturday- that Saturday night, they continued up until twelve o'clock. It was ridiculous. It was a crowd, traffic out the highway fifty-five all the way down to to Old Year's City Road. People was walking, parking in my yard, cutting across my yard. It was just a ridiculous situation after Saturday night. Saturday night was terrible. I've never seen it. I videoed- I videoed the traffic. I showed the gentleman here the video that I made when I was out there. Guys cutting across my yard. I think four-wheelers driving across. It was ridiculous because I made contact with the sheriff department before the shift ended. And he advised me to call back in after he got off shift. I have- they have my case numbers on record at the sheriff department.
Yeah, it sounds like they-
They were very skeptical of just enforcing, saying, look, you're gonna- you all guys are gonna have to stop. Because they had paid, there was no reason for us to have to suffer that noise and that distress because the people had paid to come in, and that was totally irrelevant.
Yeah, it sounds as if the sheriff department had everything, you know, it's just a matter of, I guess, understanding and knowing the ordinances that we passed.
And- and dealing with the crowd.
And dealing with it, so.
Cause the people that came out there and paid their way in, they wasn't guilty anything. If the one that organized it and was doing it, they are the one that we should be after. Because the people coming out there paying to go in, they didn't know no better. They just paid their fee.
Right.
And who owned the property? Who organized that?
I have the information.
Property owned the town and everything. I got- I just- I got it all too.
Scott, if you don't mind, will you give me a copy of that, of the property owner's name and stuff? I've got who we reported in our report, but I'd like to have that too.
My neighbor called me at four o'clock and said, Mr. Brown, my daughter gonna be having a photo- this is Thanksgiving at four o'clock. My daughter gonna be having a photo shoot over here. Gonna start at eight and end at two o'clock. I've already notified the sheriff department. They said the only thing I need to do is notify my neighbors. I said, Ben, that's not what you're doing. It's all over the internet. I'm finna send you what you're doing. You fixing to have a trail ride with DJs and music. I'm fixing this. And I forward that, what he had put out over the internet for the past two weeks. He lied to me like it was a photo shoot. And I told- I said, the officer was standing there. I said, who would do this right next door? Would- would Mr. Benford want me to come to his home in Florida and get right next door adjacent property? And blast him away on Thanksgiving night? He would not want that. No, I wouldn't want that either. It was totally uncalled for. But they did not shut them down.
Yeah. All right, I think- I think Jeremy's got that- that point going down on that as well. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate it. Greg, next.
Ms. Peppers.
All right, Ms. Peppers? Please come up and state your name and give your address and a couple of minutes on what you'd like for-
Yes, good morning. My name is Veronica Peppers, and I have with me my husband, Patrick. I live at three ninety Catlet Road. I'm in District Two with Mr. Baxter, Supervisor Baxter over there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board this morning. I'm here representing the undersigned residents and stakeholders at Fox Lane, which have been respectfully submitted. We- we've sent a petition to Mr. Baxter there, therefore to make the formal request to the Madison County Board, a supervisor to approve the conversion of Fox Lane from a private road to a public road. Fox Lane currently operates as a privately maintained roadway. And as the community surrounding us has grown, traffic has increased on that lane. Maintaining the road has become increasingly difficult for us as property owners. I'm adjacent to that road, and we've actually spent money on gravel and things like that to try to keep that road surfaced the way it should be. But the converting the road to a public road will ensure the consistent maintenance, approved payment improvements for safer conditions for all who reside on that road, as well as myself, who's alongside that road, for service vehicles and emergency responders. As a resident, we've tried to maintain the road. However, like I said earlier, it, over time, it kind of developed ruts and things like that, potholes. And there's like heavy dust that is on that road from just what we've tried to maintain. Me, myself, I'm a- I'm a veteran. I've been serving thirty-six years in the military. I've- I've Operation Enduring Freedom, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, and Operation Iraqi Freedom, two thousand three oh four. And I do have medical conditions, and I can get those for you, like I stated to Supervisor Baxter, that states that, you know, I need like good clean air. And one of the things that has been advised through my medical condition is that I kind of do things outside, and I try to do those outside activities like gardening in my yard. It's what I call gardening landscaping, or however you want to say that, maintaining my- my property. And all that dust from vehicles going up and down that road, you know, consistently, it's not allowing me, you know, to- to get the fresh air that I need, and it worsens my conditions medically. So, you know, as supervisors, you all know that poor roads create unnecessary risks, delays, and physical strains. Converting Fox Lane to a public road for future pavement, hopefully, will level out that maintenance and help us to be able to keep and reserve that road. Additionally, this road could potentially connect to other roads and help with traffic overflow. And it also can be used as when there's like emergency situations, where you have to do detours along Catlet, that can also be used in the future because it can connect to other roads. But we as residents of that- of that area appreciate the guidelines and requirements. If there's anything else we need to do that's involved in this process, we're prepared to meet any necessary conditions or documentation to support this request. So that's our request this morning.
Ms. Peppers, first of all, we appreciate you serving. We appreciate you, you said, thirty-six years?
Yes, sir.
That's, man, that's a long time. We appreciate your service, you know, in- in helping us with our freedom, very much so.
Ms. Baxter? This is, uh, this is, I know we spoke about this. This road's about a quarter of a mile, right?
Yes, sir. It's about a quarter of a mile.
How many people live on the road? Or how many homes?
There's at least six homes on that road.
And it's a dead end road?
Yes, sir.
And currently it's gravel?
Yes, sir. And we've just recently, last year, put that gravel of myself and about three of the other residents actually paid to get some gravel brought in there just because of the decrease in the- the surface of that road.
Mike, is there anything else we need to do to move forward in adopting this as a public road?
Yeah, there should be a review by two- two supervisors to see if if the conditions are such that you could make it a public road. You have to go and physically look at it.
So I need to make a motion to put together a review committee?
Two- two supervisors, I think, one- one not in the one, not in the area, and one in the area?
No, it doesn't really matter. It doesn't take a matter.
Can't be there one, that.
I put Casey and-
Two- two not here.
Casey and Carl.
Well, I'm familiar with the road very much. Also, I'm familiar with our ex-employee Veronica.
Yes, sir. I'm an ex-employee of Madison County, about six and a half years.
Madison County. She's worked for Makita.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Before she left us for the military.
That is correct, sir.
All right, that's good. There, we have a motion on the table for, I think it was Supervisor Brandon, Supervisor Banks to go and bring a recommendation back to the board to have a second.
I'll second.
Second, Supervisor Banks, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
All right, Greg?
No more.
Okay, we'll go down to consent items. Anyone like to remove any item off the consent? If not, do I have a motion for approval for the consent?
I'll move.
Motion Supervisor Banks to have a second?
Thank you.
Second Supervisor Griffin, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. We'll go down to business item. We'll have our Veterans Affairs Man, Mr. Melda Kemp. Mendel, come on up and give us some information.
All right. Do y'all have copies of the expenditure report by the VA?
Yeah, if you have copies, it's- it's on the agenda, but if you have copies, it'd be good.
I got copies.
Yeah, it's- it is on the agenda.
Yeah, we did.
Thank you.
I'm Mendel Kemp, and I'm a veteran service officer for Madison County. Also, Casey Davis is a veteran service officer, and she's full-time in that office. And I'm part-time. What I- I just wanted to tell you kind of what we do, and we are on the report, that expenditure report, it shows how many veterans are in- in the nation and how many are in the state, and then how many are in the Madison County, each county. As you can see, there are four thousand eight hundred and twenty-four veterans in Madison County. Last time I was here, there were six thousand, so the number is- is decreasing. And not only here, it's decreasing in the nation, so. But the expenditures have increased. And so a lot of veterans have serious health problems and- and rely on the veterans, the VA for support. We are, a lot of folks, some folks don't know we're here and what we do, but we- we try to get the word out. We've had ads in the newspapers and we have- we visited VFW, all the military organizations in the county and around to try to get the word out. But we- we're quite busy, and we do have Mondays and Tuesdays are our appointment dates. And we- we have, on average, a five a day for the veterans and their surviving- our surviving spouses of veterans and dependents. We- we have their benefits available to all these people, and we try to help them get their benefits and fill out the forms, and there's quite a- quite a few forms. We have numbers, but I don't know if you need that or not, but I just wanted to come and tell you kind of what we do and there the disability claims and pension claims are the most frequent that we have, more than anything. A lot of times, we- we spend time trying to undo some claims that were filed on the wrong forms, or they've done it themselves, and we have to kind of correct the the claims, and so, but we spend a lot of time helping veterans, and that's what we do. The report that Mississippi State Extension Service prepares each year is here, and it shows tremendous impact. The company, the expenditures by the VA impact our economy tremendously, as you can see the figures. Healthcare, we advise people where to go, how to get the access, these benefits, education, all the benefits. So is there any kind of questions that you'd like me to address? Or if you don't know something, I'd be glad to try to tell you.
Okay. Thank benefit for you, what you and Casey do every day. If you will, give out your phone number and extension, so any veteran that might look at this hear how to contact you. Cause like you said, there's still, there's a lot of veterans out there that don't know that this department exists and it's been there for years. So if you will, give me your office number there.
Okay, the phone number is six oh one eight five 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 one eight. And you can call the main number and be referred. There's always someone there.
Yeah.
We'd be glad to help anyone that, we try to stay with folks in the county. And that's, being so close to Jackson, we can refer them to the Veterans Regional Office if they're not.
If anyone know- know a veteran that worked for the county, just live in the county, send them up to see a medic, because there's benefit for them that they might not even know about that medic can share with them.
You're exactly right, and we have a full-time person there that's all time, Monday through Friday.
That's right.
And you're there a couple of three days a week, or really when, you know, as need as well.
Yes.
You know, cause I know you- you come in a lot of times on your time off, so to speak, you know, so. Other questions?
I'm a veteran, and Casey's a veteran, and we- we know how to we know people, if we can't help them, we know who can.
Right.
So we refer them. And the system is cumbersome, and it's hard to if you've ever called the hospital, the VA hospital, you know, they always ask if you have ever thought about suicide first, and I say, not until now. It is quite an ordeal.
One- one thing too, Greg, if you would, make sure we put this on our website.
Sure. Yeah.
Send this out, and maybe a little more info with the, you know, with the information that Mendel shared with us. Be good. Thank you, Mendel.
Okay, anytime.
Okay, Albert?
He is out today, so I am filling in and hoping y'all don't notice the difference. Even though it's pretty pronounced. All right, item forty is a request from the City of Canton Fire Department for some tornado siren improvements.
Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Supervisor Banks to have a second. I'll second it for a discussion. I'll- Paul, second?
Yeah.
Paul, do you second that motion?
I think so.
Okay, Paul, second. I didn't- I didn't hear. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Okay, item forty-one is same pot of money, the request from Ridgeland for a PA system.
I'll make the motion to have a second of that. Second Supervisor Banks, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you for helping.
Thank you.
That's right.
Don't expect me to pull you out of the building if it's on fire or underwater. I'm not the guy for that.
Hey, Tim, before you get started, when's Bozeman gonna reopen?
Probably Wednesday. We are looking, they should finish backfilling today, which means they could technically open it tomorrow, except the weather is such that it is below the temperature that they can pave tomorrow, and so there's not gonna be an asphalt plant open tomorrow.
All right.
So it will be Wednesday before an asphalt plant is open and we can pave. So Wednesday's our earliest possible date.
Thank you for that update, Tim.
First item I have is a board order releasing or a request of release maintenance for the Pear Orchard Road project and authorize the board presidents to attach the board order and the letter notifying the contractor of their release of maintenance.
I make a motion for approval?
I'll second.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Next item is the exact same thing for the Rice Road State Aid Project.
I'll make a motion for approval? Second Supervisor Banks, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Next two items are supplemental agreements for the two Gandel Road projects that Wagner Engineering has. The first one is Gandel Road from Smith Carr to North Old Canton. This is for the right-of-way acquisition portion of that project. This is a supplemental agreement, the amount of six hundred and four thousand seventy-one dollars and thirty-two cents for the right-of-way acquisition. It brings that contract up to a value of two million one hundred forty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents.
Okay, do I have a motion? Motion Supervisor Griffin to have a second?
I'll second.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
The second one is supplemental agreement one to Gandel from fifty-one to Smith Carr. That's a supplemental for five hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred sixty dollars twenty-eight cents. Brings that value up to one million seven hundred forty-six thousand six hundred twenty and five cents.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to go buy some property.
Got a motion Supervisor Griffin, second Supervisor Banks, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
All right, the final item I have is a summary change order and release of retainage for the traffic signal at the intersection of Reunion Parkway and Parkway East. Summary change order decreases the contract value by four thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars for a final value of three hundred forty-two thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars. And request, if that is approved, to release the retainage in the amount of eight thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-two cents.
All right, we'll take that as it is. Do I have a motion? Got a motion Supervisor Banks to have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Brandon to- Second Supervisor Brandon, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Mr. Weeks?
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh first item I have is the are the draft minutes planned on zoning eleven thirteen of twenty twenty-five?
Do I have a motion to acknowledge the planning and zoning draft minutes?
Move on that.
Move Supervisor Banks, I'll second, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Uh next item is Ruben Augustine. It's conditional use for a single-family residence in the R-three residential district located at five oh nine Sugar Hill Street, Supervisor District Five, approved by P and Z eleven thirteen of twenty-five.
Do I have a motion?
Uh motion, is the person here?
Got a motion Supervisor Griffin, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Banks, discussion.
You're good. We just want to see who we approving for.
All right. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Next item, Cantfish Lick, this is a master plan amendment and a rezoning. Uh went from a planned unit development to a C-two located at the corner of North Old Canton and Yandle Road, Supervisor District Five, approved by P and Z eleven thirteen of twenty-five.
Do I have a motion?
Are there anybody here for this one?
Yes, sir.
With me looking at this here, uh what I got on here, kind of telling me from the intersection of North Old Canton and Yandle Road, I know Deer Deer Field will be to you uh left there. Okay, where's this property? Is it on the same side that the Deer Field serves the, you know?
It's across the street.
It's across the street.
Across the street. Okay, that's what I thought. All right, thanks. Motion approved.
Got a motion Supervisor Griffin, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Banks, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Uh last item was plat amendment. Uh there was an error on the plat. They have not made it up here. They're supposed to be reprinting that, so if I can hold that off till new business.
Well, hold it to the to the end then.
Yes, sir.
If they come, just come back up. If they don't?
Uh if they don't, they'll be back on the fifteenth.
Okay, sounds good. All right, but this?
Uh nothing at the moment, but the Chancellor Clerk and I have a issue with executive session.
Okay, good. All right, Greg?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I've, item fifty-one is the rare occasion where I come bearing good news. The update on broadband phase one. For broadband phase one, if you are in the project area, which is starting here and going northeast almost to the county line, you are now eligible and able to sign up for broadband service. Every house that they, or every passing, as they call it, that uh that they had in the plans is done now.
Right.
I talked with their construction manager and he fully anticipates that there may be a house or two that they missed.
Right.
If that is the case, let us know. If you'll call us or email us, uh call the main number and they'll get it back to me. And we will get with Comcast to get it out to your house. But on the whole, if if you're uh in the project area, you should be able to sign up for broadband internet as of today.
Outstanding, outstanding job. Just just remind them that they do have some cable.
Yes.
That they hadn't put in the ground that go on across one super valley yard.
I suspect they're gonna get that one licked pretty quickly.
All right.
Uh but wh- while they're still cleaning up cable, you can sign up. Uh so you can go ahead and get the service and have access to the the internet at your house while they are doing the cleanup, which is why they're not here doing a formal announcement with press and and a big event and all that. This is just, hey, guys, go sign up for it rather than the project is finished.
Yes, go sign up.
That is great news.
It is.
And want to thank the Board for the leadership. Supervisor Griffin really want to thank your leadership as far as getting it started three or four years ago.
Yes.
And seeing it uh finished this year. So uh thank you for your leadership on this.
Uh Supervisor Stein, if I may, I I believe that should probably apply a- across the Board. I I know we're talking broadband. But this year alone, Madison County's put a hundred million bucks or opened a hundred million bucks worth of infrastructure work either in or on the ground. There have been a ton of folks involved in that, whether it's federal, state, local, et cetera, that that there are a gazillion people that could stand up here and take some kind of credit for it, but but ultimately, in in my opinion, uh not just because y'all pay me, n- none of this happens without this Board saying go.
That's, you're exactly right.
So I I believe y'all deserve an unbelievable amount of credit because while we may be opening a hundred million bucks worth of work this year, we didn't do a hundred million bucks worth of work this year. Th- these are years-long projects that just so happened to have come to fruition this year. So y'all deserve an immense amount of credit for that because nothing goes without y'all saying go. So that's uh broadband phase one. Item fifty-two is a contract with Benchmark Construction Corp. related to the uh construction of the tax building on the south end of the county, on the land that uh y'all approved the purchase of last meeting that we are working on closing.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Got a motion Supervisor Banks, uh I'll second, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
I have a question. Do we have plans for this building?
We have preliminary plans, yes, sir. Uh we have a site plan and we kind of have a a rough idea of how it's going to fit on the site. Uh the the assessor and I and and all of the the players involved will need to come together to finalize those plans.
I mean, do we have a building with walls and office sizes and locations and all that?
We have a drawing of a building with office sizes and and all of the the things that go along with it.
And all these months and years of discussion by land and pushing this through, I haven't seen those plans.
That's because I hadn't been.
I haven't seen the drawings. I haven't seen the ideas.
There there hasn't been anything finalized yet. We we have meetings uh upcoming this week, which I believe will lead to a a set of plans, a set of construction documents. Uh right now, what we have is a drawing. It it it's not necessarily plans, I I would say.
Can you send me that?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
So I can?
Sure. Sure. Yes, sir.
All right, it's, we already voted.
I'm not sure what the vote was.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed.
No.
Okay. But yeah, they there's no set of plans at this point and that's what we're just getting started. So hadn't anybody seen anything because there's not any. So, all right, Greg.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much.
All right, and so?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Item fifty-three is the budget amendments and the interim fund cash transfers.
I'll make a motion for approval to have a second. Second Supervisor Banks, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Okay. The next three items is one general claims docket and two payroll dockets.
I'll move on that. Got a motion Supervisor Banks, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Griffin, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, Supervisor Banks.
Fifty-seven.
Okay. All right, item fifty-seven.
Yes, sir. That is the approval of the fee core claim docket.
Can we get a motion on that?
Got a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Want a lot?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President.
How are y'all today?
Good morning, Greg.
On behalf of Madison County, Mississippi, in accordance with section one point three of the certain MOU with Nissan North America, commonly known as the Delta IMOU, that certain agreement to make payments in lieu of adwarem taxes, called the pilot agreement, dated April the twenty-third, two thousand and three. The following payment in lieu of tax is now due of and from Nissan North America for twenty twenty-three. One million, six hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. These figures are based upon the calculation set forth in Exhibit A prepared by the Honorable Norman Kennedy Tax Assessor. In accordance with section five of the aforementioned pilot agreement, would you permission I provide a condensed version of this motion?
Okay, do I have a motion?
No, I gotta make the, I was about.
You gonna make it?
Yeah, if you want me to, well.
Okay.
Would you prefer me just?
No, you go ahead and read it.
All right, condensed version. Whereas on November the eighth, two thousand, Madison County with, together with the state of Mississippi, the city of Canton, Mississippi, and numerous other governmental bodies entered into a certain MOU with Nissan North America, a true and correct copy of which may be found in the miscellaneous appendix of the minutes of the Board of January the thirty-first, two thousand and five. Whereas Madison County entered into an agreement to make payments in lieu of adwarem taxes dated April the twenty-third, two thousand and three, approved by the Madison County Board of Supervisors on March the twenty-first, two thousand and three. Whereas the Board finds it necessary pursuant to Mississippi Code twenty-seven thirty-one one oh four to establish an amount due from Nissan North America. Pursuant to the provisions of Mississippi Code twenty-seven thirty-one one oh four and upon the advice of counsel, the Board of Supervisors of Madison County does find an order as follows that based on statutory authority set forth in Mississippi Code twenty-seven thirty-one one oh four, Nissan North America has been granted a ten-year exemption from adwarem taxation pursuant to section one point three DI of the Delta IMOU. That in exchange for said exemption, Nissan North America is obligated to make annual payments in lieu of taxes to Madison County and such payments in lieu of taxes are fee payments, not adwarem taxes or any other nature. That the Madison County Board of Supervisors has the authority pursuant to Mississippi Code twenty-seven one twenty-seven thirty-one one oh four to determine the amount of the payment in lieu of taxes owed by Nissan North America and that the tax assessor of Madison County has prepared and submitted to the Madison County Board of Supervisors a calculation of the amount owed by Nissan North America. The payment due upon Nissan North America's real property values is five thousand twenty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Payment due upon Nissan North America's personal property taxes is one million, six hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents for a total of one million, six hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. And that the Board hereby adopts said calculation and the Chancellor Clerk shall prepare invoices reflecting the above amounts and submit the same to Nissan North America. But upon receipt of the balance due from Nissan of the total pilot agreement, one million, six hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars and ninety-two cents will be apportioned to the appropriate entities. Therefore, upon receipt of the entire entirety of funds of Nissan North America, the county treasurer will pay said funds. I ask that the Board adopt and approve this motion.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks to have a second? I'll second for further discussion and and I'm glad you read it through because I, you answered two or three of my questions.
I left some things out, but I did I did.
Cause that's the agreement back in two thousand?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so. All right, other discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thanks, Mr. Lot.
Thank you.
All right, Sheriff Park, Mr. Jeremy?
I have a copy of the inmate meal log for the month of November twenty twenty-five. Uh if you would uh acknowledge that, I will provide it to your clerk.
Got a motion to acknowledge. Do I have a second? Second Supervisor Banks, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Old business? New business?
I have some new business. Uh last month, month of November, we uh lost a member of Makita's board and that was Mr. Lanny Slaughter.
Right.
And so I need to go ahead and make an appointment to replace him on that board. Now, I like to do that with uh Mr. Percy Brooks. Mr. Brooks's address is one sixty-five McCormick Drive, Ridgeland, Mississippi, three nine one five seven. He's a graduate of Jackson State University.
All right, we we have a motion. We have a motion and I'll second, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. And I guess he would start immediately?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other new business?
Uh did you get the corrected plat? This is the plat amendment, Cedar Point subdivision, located on Cedar Hill Road, Supervisor District Four.
Move.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks to have a second. I'll second, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Also, do I have a motion going to closed termination?
I'll make that motion.
Motion Supervisor Banks to have a second. I'll second, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Also, while I'm at it, do I have a motion going to executive session for?
Litigation.
Litigation. I got a motion to have a second. Second Supervisor Banks, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. We are now in executive session. Thank you, Dwayne. We are back out of executive session. Mr. Lot?
Uh the Madison County Board of uh Board of Supervisors made a motion to authorize the Board attorney to file a tax sale set aside lawsuit.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lot. Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn to December the fifteenth, nine AM?
I'll make that.
Motion Supervisor Banks to have a second?
Thank you.
Who's second?
Paul.
All right, second Supervisor Griffin, discussion. All in say, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Thank you.
Get Santa Claus ready, cause.